First, we're going to start with the invocation by Reverend Snodgrass. If you would, sir, please join us at the podium.
Mr. Chairman, he's Crenshaw United Methodist Church. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate you coming here to help us with this.
Absolutely. Let us pray. God, as we gather at this appointed time and place, before the business that lays before us is discussed, we pause to say thank you.
Yes, Lord.
Thank you for providing us with the freedom to gather in this way. And thank you for those who have been called to serve our county. Those who are paid, those who volunteer, those who administrate, and those who labor. Bless each and every one of them, Lord. Bless the work of their hands and feet. Bless the work of their minds and their hearts. Bless all that they do, that in their doing we may all see and receive your divine blessings of peace, grace, mercy, and care. Lord, as this evening's business is discussed, we pray that you guard all who are present, whether they speak or silently listen. As we open our mouths, may we also open our ears, our minds, and our hearts. May we always and everywhere be open to hearing, seeing, and feeling your presence at work in all that we do. Guard this evening, Lord, that all this which is discussed may be unifying and not dividing, a path forward for each of us. Show us, Lord, what it means to be not only citizens of Nottaway County, but citizens of your eternal kingdom. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, here, now, always, and everywhere. Amen.
Amen. All right. If you would, please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. All right. I need a motion to approve the agenda, but there's going to be two changes that I'm aware of. We're going to strike under F, Presentations Number Two.
Yes, sir. That was due to a conflict. Mr. Chairman, we've got a couple more. I would like to, if we would, could we counsel, cross out the real estate reservation road? We have to get some paperwork straight before we have that public hearing.
Board members, that's under E three.
Yes, sir. I got it.
F two, F one, I'd like to relocate that behind C for the Davenport presentation.
Yes, sir.
J six, I'd like to counsel that. J six, you have already voted for that, and that was my mistake, and I apologize to the board. And I think that's it.
All right. Board members, y'all have heard the movements and the strikes. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda at this time?
I still move.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Need approval of the amendments from June 18th and August 15th as well during your board package.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Now I have a motion to adjourn. No, I'm just kidding. All right. We're going to go to the presentations for the radio system project financing right now. Mr. Bowen, do you want to take the lead on that with Davenport?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, board members, and citizens, this is the radio project that's been well overdue for the county. Davenport has been working in partnership with the county. We have Mr. Roland Kooch here, as well as David Rose, which good to see him back in the saddle, I call it. And they're going to make some recommendations. And Mr. Collins was part of the ad hoc committee on this, and so you may hear some comments from him as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowen, and it's a pleasure to be here with my colleague, David Rose, who you know very well, made some past meetings, past presentations. My name is Roland Kooch. I've been working with David and with Steve here with Nottaway County for the past year or so in terms of various strategies and looking at finances and things. What I'm here to talk about tonight is what we think is a good result in looking at financing opportunities for the radio system project. Before I get into the presentation itself, just a high-level overview, as Mr. Bowen had said. We met with the committee, Mr. Bowen and Mr. Collins, in looking through these proposals and these results. What we had done was we had helped and we had looked at financing opportunities for the county for this project. What you have tonight is the culmination of that process. We considered all financing opportunities available to the county, that being direct bank financing opportunities, as well as Virginia Resources Authority. That's the primary agency of the state that allows for financing these types of projects. And when we went into this, we were not assured that we would be successful from a bank approach in terms of flexibility, but we also knew that VRA would potentially be there as well for us, albeit there might be some more conditions attached to that. What we have here tonight in the summary form, before I get into a couple of these pages, is that we feel we've got a very successful direct bank loan opportunity that really is really super flexible, allows the county to undertake this project, but allows for flexibility beyond what we call this initial loan. So, very cost-competitive funding as well in that approach. And what we're here tonight is to talk about that, as well as seek the resolution of the board to proceed forward with this and get this financing implemented. So, I won't belabor every detail on these pages, but effectively on page one, just the background, I kind of went through that process for you, looking at both direct bank loan opportunities as well as Virginia Resources Authority. We did that approach. We worked with the county over the past month and a half to go down that path, and we're here today with respect to presenting those results. Page two, details here. This is what we asked of the bank. We asked for both a 15-year and a 20-year financing approach. We also asked for the ability to prepay this any time without penalty. That was one of the key things we liked and seen from the bank, and we'll talk about those results as well. Page three, the alternative to a bank is what we call Virginia Resources Authority. Virginia Resources Authority is one of those that can match a 15- or a 20-year loan, but that comes with it certain terms and conditions that may not be as flexible. That which is, they're looking for specific real estate collateral, so we know that that's definitely something we need to be concerned about if we go down that path. Secondly, you can't prepay a Virginia Resources Authority loan in the first 10 years. There's just a lockout period, and that's standard for every type of financing that goes through that. So, those are the key kind of provisions there that you've got to think about as we think about what we have today for consideration. On page four, summary of the proposals we received, we went out to about 100 local, regional, and national banking institutions, big, small, regional, local, the whole nine yards with respect to the universe there of potential banks. We received four proposals. And as I said coming into this, we're excited about the proposal we received. Effectively, on page five, two of the proposals were in the same ballpark, but one of them really stands out. If you look at the middle of the page, you can see Huntington Bank. They provided the 15-year as well as the 20-year option. We have a couple of different structuring options, but what we're recommending tonight to provide the most flexibility is the 20-year option that reduces the stress on the county's budget in terms of payments, and also recommending the option that allows you to start the payments in next fiscal year with next fiscal year's budget, so as not to exacerbate or put any more pressure on this year's budget than you already have. The benefit of the Huntington Bank proposals, we talked about, we received exactly what we wanted to get. It's not guaranteed we'd get it, but we got what we wanted to get, which is the ability to prepay this thing and extinguish the loan any time at par. So while we're talking about this bank proposal, it's about a 4.1% cost of funds. It's very competitive in today's market, but that ability to prepay any time without penalty allows you the opportunity to potentially refinance this as rates would get lower, could get lower. We can do that. We can absorb it. We can consolidate it with other capital program financings if we need to do that down the road. So there's a lot of opportunity to work with this down the road if we need to, but for right now, it accomplishes the goal of providing funding with the flexibility that you need here. And also, another key factor is that the equipment we're financing is the only collateral for this loan. It's structured in a lease-type loan concept, so we don't need to add any more county assets to the loan as collateral. If we were to look at VRA, we'd have to do that. That's a policy of VRA. See, that would be a key thing there from that perspective. So, 15 years on page six, but if we turn to page seven, the 20-year option is what we're recommending. And again, you could see here in column B, these are the exact payments that you will see in the final lease documents that are going to be incorporated and finalized.
And that's Exhibit B. These numbers will be in Exhibit B.
These numbers will be in more detail in Exhibit B, but that column in Exhibit B is exactly what you're going to see in the final documentation.
Okay.
There's actually different payment dates, but those will be documented in there, and you will not see any difference in those numbers.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
The VRA is just put here from a perspective to give you a perspective on what VRA would offer, but again, we have caveats there. This is a moment in time. It's not guaranteed right now. Subject to change. It's only a representative example of what could be today. Now, that funding is later down the road. We don't know what it's going to be ultimately, but what you'll see there is that it also does come with that 10-year lockout period that we cannot refinance it, and also you're going to have to provide real estate collateral for VRA. That's the definite sort of disadvantage on that side. So on page eight, this leaves us where we're at with our recommendation. We've got basically six key factors here that go into our recommendation for the 20-year option for Huntington. Right now, it's a known cost of funds that eliminates potential interest rate risk. It's highly competitive. We feel this is a very competitive direct bank loan that's an interest rate not subject to change. We can close relatively quickly by mid-October, so you'll have funding in hand for the radio project. You won't have to worry about how you pay for it down the line. Again, I've talked about it and stressed it, ability to prepay the loan any time at par, which means no penalty, provides for maximum flexibility going forward. The radio project's equipment, fifth, is the collateral, so we don't have to put in any more additional county assets into this as collateral. And the way we're structuring it here with respect to the payments, the first payment starts in fiscal year '26, so you have the ability to work this into your budget going forward. We don't have to worry about trying to figure out how we accommodate it in the FY '25 budget. Last page is the calendar. I'm just looking at this essentially. We've put all the dates in here, but effectively, we're looking at the board meeting tonight with respect to the approval of the resolutions. We have until October 31st to close, but we think we can do it faster than that by mid-October, given the timeframe and working with this bank. They're ready to go on this. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
All right. Well, board members, y'all know we've been working on this for a while. I know, Mr. Collins, you still stand by this recommendation from them as well?
I do. You know, your first thing that y'all do is look at interest rate, and the VRA was a better interest rate, fixed for 10 years. This one's fixed for 20. If we kept it, we know what our rate exposure is, and then we've come into a falling rate environment finally. So we may be looking at getting a better interest rate from Huntington, maybe, and we have the ability to do that. We don't have to have a deed to trust. We're not putting a lien against our courthouse. It's just an overall better option for us, even with a little bit higher interest rate.
All right. Board members, what I'd like to do at this time, and we can continue any discussions afterward, but I'd like to get a motion to approve authorizing a resolution in form of financing documents recommended by Davenport. Can I get a motion for that?
I still move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Now, is there any more discussion from anybody? I think it's the first time in the county's history we borrowed money for anything. Been a while.
I've never borrowed seven million dollars from anybody. But I need to say this, Davenport's been working good with us, and they're not here to watch us fail, and they understand our finances, very much so.
And the first responders stand behind this. The vast majority of the first responders stand behind this, so I'm good with that. If there's no more discussion...
In this proposal, I saw that Citizens Bank was one of the ones that y'all reached out to, but I didn't see any proposals from Citizens Bank.
It's in the...
What page am I missing?
Page 11.
Yeah, that's missing.
It's missing from the back of the...
That was the R O P, right?
Page 11.
I've got it here, Bo.
You want to stop at nine, too? We can't count on double digits.
Looking over.
Who done this, Banda? You done?
Mr. Chairman. This is from a meeting, Bo.
I got it. It's on the back.
Oh, you found it on the back?
Did, yes.
It was on another tab, Mr. ...
Oh, yeah.
Citizens Bank was 6.25%.
At least they was willing to. They in the county, and they was willing to do something out of... How many you say you checked with? Over 100? And you got four back?
Four proposals, yes.
Wow.
Mr. Chairman, for the public's knowledge, does this amount we're financing include the million-dollar grant that we are receiving for this project?
It does.
It does.
It includes the million-dollar grants. So once that grant is obtained, it'll pay down the note? One says yes, one says no.
It's already factored that.
So we're financing the million dollars less, assuming we get the million-dollar grant?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
I got you. All right. You're good? And the million-dollar grant will come in when? But on or by closing, or when it's time to pay for this thing, or what?
It's got to be money spent first.
Yeah, we've got to spend the money first.
Chicken or the egg?
So we're going to take the county's money and get it reimbursed? Is that what we're doing, since it's not figured in this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You good?
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Steve, Davenport, y'all get your work.
Kooch, thank you.
All right. Oh, roll call. Can we do a roll call?
Oh.
All right. All right. Well, board members, we're going to do a roll call vote.
He really wants... Someone to go to jail. No, I'm kidding.
All right. So what we do is we do it, we'll back up, we shall rescind that vote and go back to a roll call vote. Mr. Collins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Ms. Norton?
Aye.
Mr. Toth?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. All right.
I vote.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all have a Merry Christmas. All right, board members, we're going to roll...
Thank you for making that change, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Let all these people see where their order on tax dollars are going. All right. Anyway, delegations from the public.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
My name is Judge Charlton. I'm from Charlotte County. I'm the president of the Virginia Property Rights Alliance. I'm a hunter. I'm speaking to you all tonight about the misrepresentation of the facts in the letter that was sent to the governor regarding the proposals by DWR regulating deer and bear hound hunting. Yes, Nottaway, like Charlotte County, is a rural, but to say that you reject these proposals because Nottaway County is dog hunting, and next thing you know, all hunting affected, is false. The logic behind the letter was that if you try to separate this hunter from that hunter, the next thing you know, all hunting will be gone. There is nothing further from the truth. People like myself only want to be left alone, and we don't have problems with other types of hunters. Know the facts. Deer hunting with hounds is only allowed in half of Virginia and a handful of southeastern states. In Virginia, those counties with dog hunters, on average, make up 44% of the deer hunting population. In Nottaway County, hunters only kill one-third of the deer... In Nottaway County, hunters only kill 1/3 of the deer, though, as you point out, are highly visible while hunting from the road. Most people approve of hunting, but not of hunting with dogs. All those dog boxes you see right now are running foxes and will magically become deer hounds on opening day because it is illegal to run dogs right now, to run deer right now. You say your farmers are getting overrun with deer because there aren't enough hunters, yet steel hunters kill 2/3 of your deer, and more steel hunters can be accommodated on a given piece of property. It is true, hunter numbers in Virginia are dropping, but DWR has been working on this for years, and there is no reason not to enforce reasonable regulations. Land fragmentation is the root of this problem, and hunt clubs are not allowed to hunt where they used to. As Nottaway continues to grow, this will only get worse, and to continue to ignore this conflict is stoking a tinderbox. The SAC, Mr. Collins, participated in was not a study. It was the third committee of its kind created over the last 20 years, trying to do something about the problems with hound hunting, and it cost DWR another quarter of a million dollars. The committee was formed in January of 2023. That's almost two years ago, and there were several different meetings over the next year and a half. You say the proposal who are opposed by the public, but you don't take into account the proposals had already been adopted, and were waiting for comments to make them better, not whether or not to implement them. Dog hunters are never going to give up anything. Why would they? They have a good gill going with the laws in Virginia. Let's take a look at the two proposals you opposed in your letter. Number six, any dog being used to hunt deer or bear shall have a GPS collar. Every hunter I know uses them. A friend of mine doesn't even have the money to buy a decent belt, always has GPS collars on his dogs when he releases them, because it's the right thing to do, and it makes sense to know where your hunting dog's going to be if you can't see it. Proposal number seven, a deer or bear hunter using dogs shall make reasonable efforts to prevent his dogs from entering a landowner's property after receiving notification that his hunting dogs are not desired on the landowner's property. Is that really so much to ask? Someone asks you to keep your hunting dogs off their property, and you feel no obligation to make reasonable efforts to do so? That's going to be a problem. There are no laws to protect landowners. That's why there are so few violations. 1821321 does nothing, as Mr. Collins notes. This was discussed extensively at the SAC. Hunting dogs are able to trespass. And number 326551, I have a right to retain that dog, to control its activities, and I will. The best thing to do with people that want to be left alone is to leave them alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, having heard Mr. Charlton's comments, is there anybody that wishes to change their position on the previous letter that was sent to the governor's office? Hearing none, we're moving on. Now, I know a lot of people came here tonight to speak on this, and I do not want anybody to think that we are not trying to let you have your voices heard. This board was united with a unanimous decision to send that letter. We stand by that letter. If anybody signed up to speak for this, Nottaway is going to still stand by this letter that this board is still going to stand by this letter that it sent. But if you still want to speak, you can speak when your name is called, and you're welcome to stay the rest of the meeting. But as you've seen, everybody that made that motion was on the prevailing side, and they had the opportunity to change their mind on that motion, and nobody wants to do that. So we stand by our decision. Darrell Lott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board. I'm here tonight for a couple of reasons. Number one, I want to thank you for sending that letter to the governor. We do appreciate it. Secondly, we're about taxes here, right? But we just got heard talking about money to pay for the sound system, PA system, correct? All about taxes. That's taxes, every one of them. And those dogs, I've been hunting deer hounds all my life in the last few years. I've had deer hounds, fur dogs, rabbit dogs, and over the years, God knows how much money that I have spent in this county and as how far it's went. It's been dog food, dog tags, vet bills, gas, country stores. These people pay for that, and it's tax revenue coming back to this board right here, then and now. Give you another little thing. Last year, me and my wife, we bought a brand-new Cherokee Jeep. Only 5,000-mile trip from Crewe to South Hill. We had it tire-serviced, oil-changed, and detailed. On 137 between Crewe and between South Hill and Cambridge, a deer hit me. Guess what? $5,000 later for the two right-hand doors. You know who paid for that?
The sheriff?
Farm Bureau. I propose to you, this board, to petition the Virginia Game Commission to give us more days and more liberal deer hunting. You want to control your deer population? That's the way you need to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I so thought he was going to say, "Have them spayed and neutered."
Why did you say that? Because it was coming from Darrell Lott?
Yeah, yeah. That's my man.
I'm glad to see that, man. I was in coach.
I am, too. I know he's taking a bath, then.
Once a month, whether I need it or not.
William Easter?
Mr. Chairman, board members?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you letting me speak. I've been involved in this thing. I'm not trying to debate. That's not what I'm here for. I sat on a SAC committee in 2008. I was appointed by VDGIF, by the director, that Tim Kane had them do. We did eight or nine meetings. We decided that by a landslide of votes, that there were laws to protect everything that they asked for. VDGIF at that time, now they're DWR. If they had enforced them, everything's there. Most people that I know that hunt, they're law-abiding citizens. I know dogs do bother people, but if your cows get out and go on somebody's property, they tear up stuff, too. That's what you run into one of these days, you know? I just, I think, I have boys that hunt. It was, I'm 68 years old. There was dogs on the property that I live on now when I was born, and there'll be dogs there until I die legally. So I just, I saw the letter, and I appreciate y'all writing that letter. But as Mr. Lott was saying, this is where the money comes from. I tell you now, you can't raise a dog for $400 a year and feed him and hunt. So figure that out if a man got 10 dogs. And we all try to spend locally. So thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Frankie Williamson? Good evening.
I want to start by thanking the board of supervisors for their support of dog hunting in Nottaway County. Dog hunting is a way of life in our rural county. Some of my fondest memories are of me dog hunting with my father and grandfather. I also raised my kids up dog hunting from a very young age. The bond that is formed through these dog hunting lasts for generations. I now have four grandkids, and I want them to be able to experience the thrill and fellowship of dog hunting. I've been in landowners' hunt club, which is a dog hunting club, for 50 years, and I wouldn't trade the memories and friendships made for anything. Dog hunting is a way of life in rural Virginia that we cannot afford to lose.
Thank you. Now, how many of y'all thought he was coming to ask for a building permit?
He didn't have his Frankie Williamson contract.
James Long?
Good evening, chairman and board members.
Sir.
I'll give you a heads up on something before I start, with the Collins is aware of it. I'm in the middle of a process of getting implants, and I just had a procedure a couple of days ago, and now I have a temporary. Sometimes it likes to fly out. If you see it, just keep rolling.
A whole lot of old folks have... That happens to them. Whole lot of old folks and young people.
If I put a dog board up here, what number are you aiming for?
All right. My name is James Long. I'm an avid deer hunter. There's steel hunts and hunts with dogs. I love both ways of hunting. So a big thank you to this board for supporting the right to hunt with dogs. From archery season until the end of general firearm season, I try to be in the woods as much as possible. When I'm sitting in a tree stand prior to general firearms and hear a pack of dogs running all around me, does it make me mad? Sure, it does. Do I think that any type of ban or new restrictions on dog hunting are needed? Absolutely not. The laws we currently have need to be enforced. I lost my spot trying to keep my teeth in. Just a little respect for law-abiding steel hunters would go a long way in this argument, and law-abiding dog hunters deserve the same respect from the steel hunters. I'm not here to talk about hunting with dogs being a tradition in the South or to tell anyone to go back where they come from, or that my dogs can't read a posted sign. Without a doubt, there are bad apples in every group, in my opinion. There's two things that need to happen. One, we, as hunters, need to weed out the bad apples of the hunt clubs or groups by calling them out when we see them doing things that are detrimental and demand that they stop. Secondly, I'd like to see the counties of South Side Virginia support the hiring of more conservation officers to enforce the laws that we already have on the books. Having one officer assigned to a county, or in other instances, two or three counties, is ridiculous. More laws, stricter laws, won't fix any problems at all if you have no one available to enforce the ones that are already on the books. Thank you again to the Nottaway County Board of Supervisors for supporting hunting with dogs. I 100% support hunting in whatever way someone prefers. Let's just all try to be better neighbors and more respectful to the next person, no matter what their views on hunting are. As for you that truly think that banning hunting with dogs or making it so restrictive that it's not feasible will fix the problems, I remind you that meth and other recreational drugs are illegal. Walk down the streets in the counties of South Side Virginia and tell me if you think having laws in place banning meth is working. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, Mr. Long, you make a good point. You know, I've heard people talk about, you know, issues in town and out in the county and stuff like that, when you've got noise ordinances. You know, everybody's got their right to peace and quiet, but these people got the right to hear a little bit of music when they want to have a little family reunion and stuff like that. It's a lot of give and take. And to your point, I know there's a guy that likes to walk up and down one road. He's had some troubles, but he likes to bother people, looking for Dr. Peppers and such things. But, yeah, it's give and take, and it's more or less like, we don't have to treat everything like a political argument. If we can remember that we're all brothers and sisters, then we work through the family issues. You know, some give, some take, but at the same time, I'll be respectful. Good points. I appreciate you.
I would like to comment on Mr. Long's. I had an issue with a hunter several years ago. I called trying to get a wildlife officer. He was in Powhatan. We don't have enough resource officers. You're really, you're exactly right. It used to be we had one for every county. Now it's one for two or three counties or four counties. In fact, I think the gentleman I called, he had like three counties. So you can't expect him to get there. In fact, he didn't come till the next morning, when I showed him the dead deer in the yard that somebody had shot out of season on posted land and so forth. So it's something that occurs, and I agree with you. You have laws for anything, but if you don't enforce them, they're not worth the paper they're written on. So I agree with you 100%. We need more conservation officers. We really do.
Glad to see you and I agree on something.
Hey, Mr. Long?
Mark it down.
That's one of few that will agree with you that we need more squirrel sheriffs in the county, because all these people probably don't agree to that. No, it is a fact. It's a fact. I was just going to tell you, I was glad the deputies were back here to see that you get out safely.
I'm not worried at all.
Well, and two, speaking of conservation officer, Nottaway's blessed. Officer Webb happens to be a wonderful...
He is.
And I think he's a one-county officer, I think.
He wasn't when I called him.
I think he feels... I know Brett Saunders done Nottaway County a very good job.
Yeah. Kevin is a wonderful officer.
I was very happy with what he did.
Oh, yeah.
He was in Powhatan when I called.
All right. Mr. Thomas Powell?
Yes, sir, board. I'm from Charlotte County, but I hunt in Nottaway County. I hunt in Amelia County. I hunt all these counties surrounding us.
Where's the biggest bucks at? Shh, tell me later.
I don't even, the bucks don't even do me no good. I'm a bear hunter.
All right.
And we keep our dogs under control, especially me speaking for myself. My son, my grandkids, my granddad, my dad, everybody. We have been doing this stuff for years. We've never bothered anybody. We own thousands of acres of land, and it's completely ludicrous for anybody to even remotely think that stopping dog hunting would be anything good to come of it. You're going to lose children promoted to woods. They quit interest, whether they're going to go do. They don't want to go sit in a tree stand and be bored and look eat. They want to ride around in the truck, and they want to have fun. Well, it's not too much fun if you just go sit in a tree stand with whoever. And I'm not calling anybody on the bus, but I know this guy right here personally. I was raised with him. They've been against dog hunting since they were kids, and that's his whole issue. And I can let some old things go on, but I'm going to be nice tonight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We appreciate that, sir.
And other than that, I have nothing else to say, but I hope God, and we all pray, to make sure that this never happens.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
All right.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the delegations from the public for tonight. Y'all feel free to stay as long as you like. Refreshments are being served over at the sheriff's department. That is a joke. All right, board members, we're going to move on to the departmental reports. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Public hearings, the real estate tax abatement program.
Get by ourselves now.
Hey, board members, I'm going to give it a few minutes to let everybody clear out with the conversation, so. We're now in commercial. You're welcome, brother.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You didn't call one of the people that was on the list to speak, but he said, "To hell with it." Dr. Rodney Cole.
I didn't see his name on it.
Oh, he is. He is. I'm sorry. Mr. Cole, you want to speak? You sure? I terribly apologize.
I'm, we're sorry. See, baby? Come up here. Just come up here. Just come up here a minute.
I don't hear you on that.
Everybody got to get together and see each other.
Yeah, I totally missed it right there. See, that's what messed me up. It had a check right there.
And I heard you. I heard you was coming, and I kept scanning, looking for you.
People care for the dogs.
People care for the dogs. You know, there's a perception out there that these dogs are not fair from, you know, the first week of January to the first week of November.
If you think that you should still say it, it's being recorded, you might ought to say it. Do you want, do you still want to give it? I'm sorry about that. I didn't know you was on the list. I understand.
I apologize. When I was looking here, because I normally, like this, I normally check my stuff.
There's a lot I'm worrying about that ain't on my list.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
They asked me to talk, that's why I just pulled over. They asked me to talk on that. Of how people, you want to get in the audience, you ask people in this room to raise your hand, whether they want to feed Showtime, Pride, or plantation. You'd have fistfights break out. And the point is, everybody, this, this one holds better condition for my dog. And that's an example of how these people look after these dogs. People think they just don't feed them from the first week in January to the first week in November. They, you start, that's not true.
All right, thank you, Rodney.
All right.
Hey, that cat.
Going to the public hearings for the real estate tax abatement. Mr. Bowen?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We were looking at, to adopt the ordinance to, in the county, for the abatement taxes of, for the renovation or demolition of derelict buildings. Mr. Chairman, this, uh, we haven't received any comments back on this, this public hearing as, as of yet, but I believe when you get to the blight ordinance, it might be another situation. So I think it'd be okay if you would open it up.
All right. Board members, I need a motion to open up the public hearing for the real estate tax abatement program.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second, please.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on the real estate tax abatement program, whether for or against? For or against? All right, hearing none. Board members, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. Actually, one board member comments, you wanna do that after?
Yes, sir. All right. I need a, all right, I need a second.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, the public hearing on the real estate tax abatement program is closed. Mr. Collins, if you had some comments, sir?
I did. The paragraph under the, in bold, that is defined in the Nottaway County Code of Ordinances, we don't have that yet, so you can't reference it by voting on this one first. I'm not sure the time or the method of that. Last sentence in that one, "We don't have a real estate assessor to make assessments of derelict buildings." That's the definition. And then the last paragraph is, you're giving somebody, you're trying to incentivize somebody to take care of their property, and so they spend money, and then you can reduce the property value by that amount. So it doesn't, doesn't create any income for the county by improving value, but it does clean up a problem.
Yes, sir.
I'm just a little conflicted about that.
Yeah, I, I had a phone call on that paragraph also, talking about, you know, you're not gonna really make any money if you do that. You're gonna actually lose money, because if somebody increases the value of their property and you give them a tax abatement, you're not gonna get that tax money. So, I mean, that's something I think we probably need to look at.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, let me make sure I'm right. So you, we want to make the following changes and then vote on it, or how do we want to do this? Or do, that's a lot of changes.
Well, Catherine said we had to have the abatement to have the blight ordinance.
Right.
Yeah. You adopted abatement first before you adopted ordinance. That's right.
Mr. Elders, the abatement under the Code of Virginia defines, this is what we have to have?
This language that is in the proposed ordinance is basically pulled directly from the Virginia Code. So if, if the board wishes to amend the language in the ordinance, what I would probably suggest is to let us take a look at that and to, to make sure that if we're tweaking it, we tweak it in a manner that's consistent with the code and not inconsistent. You know, whether you pass it and, and whether you pass it as written or whether you want to make changes is purely up to you all. But I think it would probably be a smart idea, if you wish to make changes, let us take a look at those. Let us make sure that we're not doing anything that actually violates state law, and then we can come back to the board and.
I agree with that.
Go forward in October.
Yes, sir.
You said we can get this back in front of us next month?
Sure. I, I think, I think if you all would just let us know, maybe, you know, send an email and put it in writing, the changes that we'd like to consider, then what we can do is we can come back in October and we could say, either yes, you can do this, or we can explain to you maybe why, either you can or why it might not be a good idea to make those changes.
All right, and will that, will those changes, you think, require us to hold it on the public hearing? And I say that just so we can make sure that we advertise appropriately.
No, I don't believe it. I mean, generally, I think if we were expanding the ordinance to make it more restrictive or to broaden the law we're trying to pass, I think we'd have to have another public hearing. But I think if we're, if we're dialing it back, then I don't think we have to have another public hearing.
All right, so if we go ahead, because we got the real estate, I'm sorry, the blight ordinance behind us, if we go ahead and do, hold the, that public hearing as well, and then we can hold off, get the new language and take the votes in October?
Correct. And I, I think I'll wait for the public hearing on the blight ordinance, but if, if you like that as is, then we can have had the public hearing on that, and we can take that issue up in October, too. And similarly, if you want to make changes to that, we can talk about that, and we can always take it back on the agenda for next month.
All right. So we can, so we can go ahead and hold that public hearing?
So we'll table this one for now.
Yeah. You want to, go ahead and hold, go ahead and hold the public, the blight, the blight ordinance as well?
We're gonna go ahead and, we'll go to that, that one. But this one's just, we're not, we're not taking any action.
Yeah, we're not gonna take any action on either one of them. But we, just let us know what we're gonna do. All right, so board members, we'll move on to the blight ordinance. I need a motion to open the public hearing for the blight ordinance.
I'll move.
Second?
All in favor, 65, I say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the blight ordinance? Yes, sir?
Oh, I have a question about that blight ordinance, because, let's say, for instance, we had the circumstance with my dad home and then right on campus, they caught fire. Okay, this was overnight. By that Friday, somebody had reported him to the county saying that his home was, you know, messed up or whatever you want to say. And I found that to be, you know, some people with common sense would have had, seen the first responders, you know, he was injured in that fire and things of that nature. So my question is, is that when you get vandalism, you have a fire, or you have something of that nature to the individuals or the owners, and what is the boundary gonna be, you know? What is the standard gonna be where somebody over here says, "Okay, this is blight because of X, Y, Z," or this, where, where will you set the standards at? Because that's a broad range when you say blight. And then you start talking about rulings, and then you give the consideration, I saw two years within there, to fix some of these circumstances. And then you have farmers out here, is this all in Nottaway County? Or is it hundreds of acres, like that man said, he had a thousand acres? So you can have buildings that are on those thousand acres. And my concern is, is that you have people who farmed and things of that nature all these years, and then you point to that farm, and you say, "Hey, I want you to fix this." And then you got taxpayers, and that could be turning people against the county from their perspective of being a taxpayer. So I thank you all for your time, Chairman of the Board and to the board. And that was just my concern.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else that we speak for or against? All right, hearing none. I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll move.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, 65, I say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. All right, board members, did y'all have any discussion on the blight ordinance? Of course, we're not taking any action on this tonight.
I, I was gonna say, I'd received a couple of phone calls about it also, with kind of much the same concerns that this gentleman had. And, and thinking about it and, and reading over it, I think we do need to, to look at it again and see exactly what we want to consider blight and how we go about determining what is blight. I'm in a situation right now that I've had the same situation your dad had. And if somebody came along and said, "I want you to cut that house down right now," I'd have to have, it would be ugly.
Yeah.
But anyway, so I think we probably ought to revisit it a little bit and tweak some things and make sure we understand exactly what we're doing.
Yeah.
I'd like to state the two goals that were my understanding.
Right.
And make sure everybody still has the same goal. One was to protect our tax base.
Yes.
So that was so that properties continued to generate real estate tax so that we could fund the things that the county needs, like the radio system. So encourage people to take care of their properties. The second one was drug blight, and that's criminal blight part, where there's ongoing problems in this county. And we need to give the sheriff the tools to help him control that. I believe that was what our intention was.
Yes, sir, right.
I totally agree.
I'm still there.
So we're gonna keep those goals in mind, and then we'll, we'll keep working.
Yeah, we, we got several amendments that we're gonna add and subtract, I think, in would be in the best interest of the county. He brought up some good, good, good points. You know, he was talking about his father's house had burned down and Mr. Ingram, his, his family home. And he was talking about a lot of land. I didn't know there was an old building off the, old house actually, on my road until they cut the timber. And I can see it about 200 yards away from it. And I said, "You know, it looks pretty good with them trees changing colors around that old house, and it's been vacant for 50 years." So we'll, we'll go back and look at it and see, see if we can come up with something that, that's doable and useful.
Gary, we'll get you all that information, and, so we can have this back. So you wanted to send an email like you, like you're doing with other, okay.
If you want to do that, maybe we could even take it up to the next work session?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the best thing.
I think the work session would be the best.
Yes.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, if, if you send us some, an email or something that says, "Here, here's some things we want to change," we can look into that, and at least we're informed when we get to work session.
Right.
All right, that's right, yeah.
That'll be fine.
All right, thank you, Gary.
All right, well, you see that, Mr. Bowen, we'll put those two.
I'll have it on the work session.
Yes.
No action tonight, we're just gonna, no action.
All right, no action. All right, but we've held our required public hearing, so if everything is good to go from the work session, we'll be ready to take a vote on this next month potentially. All right, departmental reports. Ms. Bryant, so good to see you.
Yes.
I'm glad you're feeling better today.
We had some heavy rains again.
Yes, we did. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Bowen. Yes, we did have some storm in yesterday, and the only road that I know was washed out was in Dimwitty County, so we're diligently working on getting that put together.
Was it Zills, I saw it.
Yes, it was Zills Road, Zillies Road, yes. So we, we actually are trying to get some pipe ordered, so we're trying to get that put back together right quickly. I know that's a, a main road for trucks that go to.
Going to Arborette.
Yes.
But it is affecting, it's affecting not.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I told you, go break.
Okay, so I wanted to update you all on, on some of the things that we've got going on. Throughout 46th Bridge Project, the work is still ongoing on that. The official fixed completion date for that has not changed from October. However, there are some work orders that are pending that, that may delay the reopening date to early '25, so. The Route 723-460R Cut, that project has been advertised, and we'll be taking bids on that project in October. The Darvilles Roundabout, Route 40 and 750, that is still on schedule for February of '26 advertisement. On the plant mix schedule, the asphalt is ongoing. They're currently working on Route 460 in Towne and Crew. And I, I just sent the two-week look ahead for plant mix project. And if, if there's anything else that you all would like to see on those, just, just let me know. The rural rustic project for Reservation Road is now complete. Crystal Lake Road, Route 684, that project has been scoped and approved for construction, but construction has not yet started. Primary and secondary mowing is still ongoing. The speed limit study that was done to raise the speed limit on Route 460 from 55 to 60, there was some additional sign recommendations for that. We didn't have the signed study back, and as soon as the signs are fabricated, we will start installing those, so that's been approved. The Rocky Ford Route 607 Speed Study Request that was requested last, the, the last board meeting from Aaron, we actually did a study on that road already in 2019, and that went from Route 460 to Route 49, the Falls Road. And it did result in some sign installations. It did not recommend any speed reduction, and there's been no changes on the, on a Rocky Ford Road that would, would benefit us to do another study. So we're not recommending a study be done, because we're not gonna come up with anything different. So. And last but not least, the Highway Heroes Event, that when I first started talking about it, was like six months away, and now it's actually next month, October 26th, from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Chesfield Fairgrounds. A reminder, this is a free event for the public. It will be held rain or shine, so hopefully we'll, we'll see some Nottaway people up That's all that I have for you.
All right, I believe Ms. Norton had something she wanted to mention, talk.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant, we had a citizen and also a, happens to be a school bus driver call attention to Shoot Road, the portion from 723, when you turn off on Shoot Road to the Correctional Center, and the speed and the amount of high-speed people. He has had several situations with the bus, and he suggested perhaps a speed limit, a speed study on that area. And he even suggested that perhaps we could send as a board, the warden of the prison, reminding employees to slow down. But they've had several situations, and, and there's a lot of curves along that, that area. So if y'all could possibly, just that short section, not the whole Shoot Road, but especially...
From 723 to the Correctional Center, that's...
When you turn off 723 and take a left on Shoot Road.
Yeah, Lewiston Plank, you get on Shoot Road, if you're coming over the bridge on Lewiston Plank, take a left, you're on Shoot Road. And it was my neighbor who was a bus driver, and he called my attention to it also. In fact, maybe Mr. Bowen can get you a copy of his letter.
I just, I was sending it while she was talking.
Yeah, we'll get you a copy of his letter.
I didn't send it earlier.
He brought up his concerns about it, and it talked to me, and he said he seen skid marks and tires and people. I think they're not paying attention that there's a school bus stopped there somewhere, and, and it's, it's, it is a curvy road, especially in that area. And you got, if you come along over Lewiston Plank and you look to your left, Toyota Correctional Center on Shoot Road, you got a lot of correctional workers that stop beside the road to park and smoke before they go into work. And you'll see that a lot. I, I see it almost every day when, so that's something maybe that, I don't know where to, I see them park on either side, and so I don't know whether that's gonna be a problem as far as, as, you know, the buses. But my neighbor did bring us.
No parking signs, ma'am.
Well, you know, but that's, that's, it's an narrow road, and they park right alongside that road and smoke.
He did mention that the school with due diligence had moved several of the stops to try to make it a better sightline, and that still hadn't, hadn't helped.
Okay. As a reminder, the speed limit even on secondary roads is 55 unless it's otherwise posted. So unless it's posted, it's something less, it, it is 55 miles an hour, so. But we'll, we'll take a look at this.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you.
We'll get some no smoking signs.
And I want to thank, I want to thank you for getting those holes fixed on 49.
Yes, sir.
Hey, question on the 46th Project on the bridge. You said that thing is getting, gotten pushed off. People ask me all the time, "What's the completion date?" And I told them the hopeful completion date was, of course, October. Is, that was, that was contracted, correct?
Yes, it's contracted.
Is that, do they have a monetary, they, they have to pay any penalties, daily penalties if it's not completed by a certain date?
The contract does include liquidated damages, and, and it's dependent on the reason for it being late opening. So, you know, that's all.
Have they given any reason for why they might push it back into the next year?
Well, there were some issues that came up with one of the piers, and there were work orders that had to be submitted to, to do some additional work, so.
It's a lot of residents on that area that's really anxious to get that, that thing opened back up.
Yeah, I, I understand, and, yeah. The fixed completion date has not been changed as of yet.
But the opening date is. So it, right?
Not officially, but yes, it's probably gonna be delayed. So I don't want to keep saying that it's gonna be open by the end of this year when it's.
Wink, wink.
Realistically, it's probably gonna be early '25. I'm sorry?
He, he was telling me that it was, just giving me a little idea that it won't go open in October. Not officially, just a little idea.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
I'll, I'll keep you updated with all the information that I get on that bridge.
If they complete it, but it's not open, and they complete it because they don't have to pay any late finish completion dates.
Liquidated damage.
Yeah, just tell them, don't complete it till the opening date, because it don't make no difference. If they're not going to open it, no need to complete it. Don't tell them that, they'll see it.
They'll see it then?
They will, that's right.
But is that all y'all have from Ms. Bryant?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, glad to see you back.
Great, great seeing you.
Glad to be back.
Yes, ma'am. All right, you have your departmental reports in there. I'm going to skip down to the Nottaway County School, because I see, they're not sitting here because I'm good-looking, I know that, but.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Bowen. And here I thought tonight my husband came with me to hear me talk. But I come to find out it was because of his hunting dogs and. We'll have that conversation when I get home tonight.
Dr. Martin, I, I said the same thing about Ms. Bryant, you know, she had been out and got hurt, and I said, well, that's mighty kind of her husband bringing her up here, but come to find out, he'll be about hunting dogs too.
Exactly. I see where I rate in the world of hunting dogs at our house. So we'll just leave it at that, and we'll have that conversation, maybe fix him supper now.
Y'all, y'all are pinning that on them guys. They came up here to see how y'all performed, and since you was further down the list, that's exactly what he's doing, he's fixing your supper. There you go.
Exactly, so. Dr. Grimes could not be here this evening, she's actually went to senior convocation was tonight, so I'm speaking on behalf of the school system. So this evening, I had the pleasure to highlight some of the successes of the school division that we've had thus far. So it's an exciting time for our senior classes, this evening they had convocation. This year, we actually decided to hold it in the evening, which is a little bit different than during the past, it's been during the school day. And when I passed by, it was a huge turnout tonight, so I think that was very helpful for our families to be able to come in and, and experience that occasion with our students. So a couple of other things, just to highlight for you, so our school showed improvement from the twenty-two, twenty-three year to the twenty-three, twenty-four year. So I have to say that the graduation rate increased to above ninety percent this past year, and it was in the mid-eighties, and we were, I think we were at ninety-two percent, so that's significant for us. Our dropout rate decreased from twelve percent to five percent, which was significant, which means we have students that are, are staying in and they're graduating on time, so that's, that's really, really significant. And our chronic absenteeism, which had skyrocketed during the pandemic and even after the pandemic initially, we saw huge declines, over ten-point declines at all of our schools across the county, so we, we look for that to continue to go down this year. So that was an intense focus that we, we were working on last year with our, our teachers, our principals, our staff, and the community, and so we still are pushing that. And of course, September is Attendance Awareness Month for the schools, so we are continuously focusing on that. And finally, the student achievement has started to recover from the intense focus we've had on our instructional practices. Student progress was noted across the board this past year in all areas, so while it's still not where we want it to be, and it's still a work, a lot of work to go into it, we are starting to show gains and starting to show progress back, so those are good signs for us. So as always, we do appreciate the continued support that we have from the board, so that's it for us.
Well, thank you very much. Y'all have anything for Ms. Martin?
Thank you.
Go get that warm mail, my Dan's fixing for you.
Ms. Chairman, nothing right at this point, but I know they're here, also Heather Myers here. If you look at your board package G seven, we need to take three actions tonight for the school system. And in fact, Ms. Myers actually put in the, the, the state code for, for carryover, and I appreciate that for explanation, so you're just not rubber stamping anything, but we actually need three actions. We need a budget adjustment first, if the board will consider for that seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cent.
All right, board members, I need a motion to approve the budget adjustment for seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cent.
I so move.
All right, need a second?
Second.
All right, in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Clarify that's passed through, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Chairman, if you flip, if y'all would flip it over, this, we gotta have, this is car, car cargo funds from the school community grant, project graduation, and I don't have a clue what ISA EP stands for, but I bet you Mr. Toast is going to ask.
You bet.
So, school community, the grant that we received to help support attendance and those initiatives within the county, ISA EP works with our GED program, and so it allows us the opportunity to provide GED for students that qualify and meet the certain requirements being that they are sixteen, they have had to complete certain things such as career investigation, econ, and personal finance, and they are not scheduled to graduate on time, so then we have some funding that allows us to have GED, and it actually works through our alternative ed program that goes at night.
This is passed through as well, correct?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Do we have a total on that, Mr. Bowen?
Well, I can read the three figures.
Yeah, I didn't total it, but you can, they say as presented.
Okay, all right, board members, I need a motion as presented on the school community grant, project graduation ISA EP. I need a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Ms. Chairman, the last one is the reapproach, you see that, okay?
All right. Our board members, we also need a motion, and that is passed through as well, correct?
Yes, that's going to be a reappro, reappropriation of funds.
All right, the board members, I need a motion for reappropriation of funds from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five in the amount of three million, fifty-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-nine cent.
I'll make that motion.
All right, can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you, ladies, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the rest of the departmental reports, I know.
Greg, Mr. Zodi is off, Mr. Chairman, this week, and he had no report.
Now, you, you talking metaphorically or off of work?
Love you, Greg. Off of work, yeah, he'll, he'll appreciate that, he might be watching.
Yeah, all right, so then we've got Mr. Hyde, Mr. Collins, oh, there's, he's sitting over there in the corner.
I'm right here, just came in, just a few minutes ago from the trip. Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening, my staff, citizens. Just a real quick summary, you have my report, if you have any questions on that, as always, you know, feel free. I would like to highlight a few things that may not be on the report or their revisions from what's on the report. We're starting EMT class on October first, Nottaway's hosting it, we're, we're getting people from all over, we have eighteen people signed up now. We offered it to Nottaway County citizens and, and responders first, and we've opened it up now to the outsides because our deadline is September twenty-seventh, so if you know anyone that wants to take a certification EMT, we're going to start October one. It's going to be at the crew station of EMS, the main station, and also the instructors are going to be Herman Thomas, Brandon Jenkins, myself, and Andrew Modrow. We've got a team put together to tag team it and, and do different modules for, we're all state EMS instructors, so we're looking forward to working with that team. Number two, today Lee Williams and I went to Virginia Beach to present the LP Gas Training Application Project that we are working with the Town of Blackstone. Town of Blackstone is a landowner in this project, and we were partnering with, with trying to get this grant for them. We were able to go to the board of, I'm not the board, but the town council, have Mr. Green and Mr. Van Orbeck over here, we all, Mr. Van Orbeck and I presented to the council earlier this month. Today, Lee and I presented to the State Fire Board. I will tell you tomorrow to be official, we did get the grant, and tomorrow the state will have their final meeting, which is the full board, today was the committee, but they voted unanimously to award it to us, and we went for the hardship. So today was to debate for the, for the hardship, for the hundred percent, and we're going to get a hundred percent.
Great.
Great, thank you for taking the trip.
So we'll, we'll be putting that out tomorrow.
That was a worthwhile trip.
Yes, sir.
I think so, lead it to, lead thoughts are to. Okay, very good, and the next grant will be to improve the building there, so that was part of trying to get the hundred percent for this grant, so we can take some monies towards the next grant, because I don't know if that'll be a hundred percent, but it'll be, it'll be a continuation.
That could be, just to clarify for the boards, that could be a match?
The next one.
Yeah, the next one?
Yes, sir, it will, it will, with the town paying thirty-six point twenty, I mean, excuse me, the state paying thirty-six percent on the next one. And that's, that's made, based on a formula for the square footage of the burned building, and our, our burned building here in, in Blackstone is forty-seven seventy-five square feet, so that's where they came up with it. But that'll come later, and we're going to submit that probably by the, the end of next month with the Town of Blackstone, there's no deadline, that's an open application period for the repairs and renovations. We were able to network today with some leaders around the state that Lee and I both knew, and I think it's going to look positive for us to get renovation for that, so it'll be more discussions on that. The next thing was, speaking of grants, on Monday, we submitted a grant to the Office of EMS, State Office of EMS. I worked on that with Josh Havens, that's in the back, with the Sheriff's Department and Michelle Graham, and we put in for seventy-five thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars for emergency medical dispatch, software, and call-taking equipment. Now, this grant will be awarded in January after a December review, and we put in it that the project time, if awarded, we could use twenty-twenty-five, the entire year, so we've got a lot of time before this could happen. But if awarded, we went for eighty-twenty on the match for hardship, and if that's the case, we'll end up paying fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars locally, and the state paying the rest of that seventy-five thousand. If they decide to do a fifty-fifty match, obviously you take half of seventy-five, we would have to cough up thirty-seven thousand now, seven hundred and ninety-one locally, but we're hoping the eighty-twenty will be what they select.
What would that product do for our dispatchers, buddy?
What that does is, is it takes a script and puts it onto the screen to ask the right questions of any citizen calling nine-one-one. And the good news on this, it's an EMS grant, but it'll also help us on fire and extrication and those type of calls too. It's kind of like piggybacking on the technology, you know, they can't, can't separate it out at the console, but what that'll do is allow the dispatchers to see a script. We currently use a flip card, Mr. Collins, and it's a, it's an old system, it's an emergency medical dispatch, but you have to flip through what the problem is, and then tell the units responding what that problem is. Now, what we can do is read it on the screen and continue to ask questions, and it gives you an algorithm to where it tells you what to do with.
Got some AI, AI in it?
It, it's similar to AI, but it's been out for years, so even before AI became an issue, it was already out there. I think AI is going to enhance it, but more to come on that. This is a system that's very good, and like I said, seventy-five thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars for the total piece, and that's CAD integration built in.
Good deal.
The next thing is just full GIS mapping, and, and just to close out, we, we had a meeting with our chiefs, fire and EMS, and we're going to set up an EMS layer and put it out into the CAD system, probably within the next thirty days. The fire and EMS layer is a ninety percent complete, and we're going to try to do that rest of it this month, and we also have a helicopter layer that routes with the closest helicopter to any point in Nottaway County. So with, that's completed, and now all we have to do is pretty much dump that into the CAD system. And for those of you that, that hear me say CAD, that's just speak for us, but it's computer-aided dispatch, so it's a, it's a very good system, which we already have, computer-aided dispatch. And the last thing is we're writing with the chiefs, they approved unanimously at the last chiefs meeting, for myself to facilitate a committee to write protocols and standard operating guidelines that are standard for responses that all four agencies should be doing the same. We're not telling them how to do everything the same, but, you know, if you want to put hose on your truck a certain way, that's you, but this is things like safety on the fire ground and, and safety on EMS. So we're working on that with them now, and that's all I have.
All right.
Any question?
Board members, y'all got anything? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
All positive news, thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Collins, you got anything on PRG?
We are over two-hundred-and-eleven federal inmates, which is good news, because we, last year, we were down under a hundred and zero for a little while, and that did affect the budgets of all the region. So we're two-hundred-and-eleven, the new daily rate's going to be a hundred and five, I believe, is what was approved, and that's going to help us a lot, so heading in the right direction on that one.
Good deal. All right, we're going to the constitutional officer sheriff, do you, do you have anything? Okay, all right, and none of the other constitutional officers are here, so.
No, they, they have something in your package, Ms. Chairman, so you know.
Right. Mr. Ingram, you got anything on the animal shelter?
Look at that, my cohort, Mr. Bowen.
Oh, okay.
He won't look, and he didn't want to make eye contact.
You know, we had talked about getting some of those, what do you call them, the things that they pick up when they do the road? I saw some on there yesterday. I think, I think Mike had gotten some.
You're talking about to make the roads smoother?
Yeah.
Kudos to, that goes to Philip Van Orbeck.
Oh, okay.
The Town of Blackstone did that.
Thank you, Mr. Van Orbeck.
Yeah.
I saw him yesterday, I said, that's wonderful.
Yeah, he looks real good, he sent up Dan Martin, you know, there's a, there's a Mr. Dr. Martin too.
I know, I know, I know.
And he did good work, but, but I appreciate Philip.
Yeah, appreciate that.
It was washing out real bad, and he's looking out for, for this side of the county.
That's great, that's great, appreciate that, yeah. You know, we, we've been talking about the cages, have you been able to get one?
Yeah, so, so Mr. Chairman and the board, and, and I haven't got a chance to talk to Mr. Ingram, and I left Mr. Ingram alone, he went through, he's been through hardship with his, his, his home place, but also he was blessed with his brother, you know, so we, we understand that. So we did get a cage just down there, for an example, Jeff Bond, our architect, has already sent me a layout.
Oh, great.
Preliminary layout. I want to sit down with, I sent that today to Mike Gentry, to us to have a conversation before we start bringing in cares with that. He's just trying to get a feel, hey, is this something you, is this, is this what you're looking for? This is what I think meets code, and, and we'll probably have a, either a virtual meeting or face-to-face pretty soon. Like I said, we got the key to the building, Mike Gentry also got, we got, I, I didn't want to hook up the big AC unit, but it's got a little, I call it a split system in there, that we're just trying to get it, to, on, to get air circulating in there, because it's been idle for so long, and, and I, and I appreciate, Ms. Kelly went far and beyond to get the electricity hooked up, there was a miscommunication there, so that, that is moving forward. When, when he sent that preliminary drawing today to me, he, he's on target. I met, I met some of his team up there one morning, they stayed up about a half a day, took measurements, and so that was quicker than, quicker turnaround than I expected.
That's good.
Great.
Okay, all right, is that all you have, Mr. Bowen?
Yes, that's in your package, we need to get the, we need, that's in I two. Mr. Chairman, he, he did ask me to just double-check, triple-check to make sure everybody's engaged, because this is a very important appointment, as far as in the situation with finance, and, and, and all, all, all seven of these folks have talked, called me, and, and I met some face-to-face, and they're very much interested in serving, and, and the hindrance is, a lot of people don't want to share their finance, and so I appreciate all the hard work they're all going out and trying to get these, all these folks, and, and, and their names. Mr. Tony Ellett, Lynn Inge, Helen Simmons, Robert, Bob, I call him Bob Timberlake, Billy Colburn, Dennis McCarthy, and James Oliver.
All right, now, at what, what point do you determine which one, do they, did they tell you who wants to stay in which term? Like the, the two, one, two, three, and four year?
So since what, what had happened, all the terms had gone out except for one, and that person did not, did not want to come back, so they will, I, I guess they will all be appointed, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's under the code.
Yes.
You know what I'll have to, if y'all would approve right now, when I have the first meeting, we'll clarify that, and I'll put that, I'll put that in the package.
Okay, yes, so, yeah, if they, if they can work that out amongst themselves, that'll be great.
I haven't even got them together, I, I was told Davenport is going to also participate in that, just explaining to them their duties and understanding with, you know, asking them for, you know, we, we asking them for a loan from the IDA.
All right.
But anyway, so.
All right, so board members, I need a motion to approve the stated names and the, and I one here for the Industrial Development Authority.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, boy, and I'll make sure I get, get that back to you, sir.
All right, was there anything on the planning commission appointments? I know we're keeping that in there until we get that taken care of, but you got anything on the planning commission?
No, I think we still got a vacancy in District Three.
Yeah.
Is that right?
And accommodation committee appointments, I have two that I will, should be able to give to you on Wednesday of next week.
Okay, okay. I'm just keep, I'm just keeping that in the package, and you can, you can bring that to me at, at work sessions anytime.
Okay.
I've got some, buddy.
Okay, you can put.
But you want, do we want to put them all together and just vote for the whole group at, at one time, just like we did that?
All right, well, let's kind of do what, I'm fine with that if you'd like to, if you would, Mr. Collins, would you just email it to me, and then I'll start, and I'll.
Name and contact number?
Yep, I've got one too.
All right, if y'all would email that, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Yep, under the word.
I'll take care of that, all right, so the historical marker on, for Ellogram Agnew.
Mr. Chairman, that's been in, we, that was part of our work session the other night. It's, it seems when I, there was no, the board is okay with it, my understanding is, if you make the motion, you're giving the Town of Barkville the permission to relocate the sign with no cost to the county, and, and assuring that it's an agreement with the Town of Crew.
Okay, yeah, and.
Because it's in the Town of Crew.
Yeah, the initial screening was that there was no opposition.
Yeah, he said that, but I, I recommend you put that in that motion.
All right, so board members, I need a motion to approve the relocation of the Ellogram Agnew sign.
At no cost.
At no cost, with the blessings of the Town of Crew.
To move it to Barkville, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I second.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the easement for the airport sign. I don't know if those guys from Blackstone are hanging around here. Try to get there as quick as I could, guys.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that Mayor Blackstone is here, as well as the town manager, Philip Van Norbeck. They have been working diligently with the Colonel, and pretty much the easement is to put that helicopter out there on that pad. Is that right? Okay.
We have no back.
So basically, I'm asking for the permission to sign that document.
Yes, sir. So board members, I need a motion to grant Steve the authority to sign this agreement for the easement agreement for the airport sign.
I'll make that motion.
Assuming that it's been read by Turner?
He's already reviewed that one.
He has?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the Notaway dispatching positions.
Mr. Chairman, we, another committee, that was, I believe, you and Mr. Bo Toth.
Right, General.
And, anyway, we've had some incidents, what the sheriff is up against, and his, the gentleman who trains him, Josh, with the dispatchers, it's hard to train people when they're on duty all the time, you know. And without those, is that how I'm kind of summing it up?
Yes, sir.
And he's looking for, if you would unfreeze these two positions, for him to be able to hire those positions. And let me say positions, let me say this, and I did sum them up. Free up the eighty, if you add them two numbers up, eighty-seven thousand, five hundred, ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Free that funding up, so he can organize, so he can get the correct training that he feels like would help his department.
And just so y'all know as well, board members and public, that the money is already in...
It's in the budget.
Budget. This is, we would not be going into the general fund for this. So board members, I need a motion to free up eighty-seven thousand, five hundred, ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents for the sheriff's department.
I so move. We're making a motion.
Yes, sir.
Making that motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Auctioneer contract.
One second. I did have a little discussion. So back during budget time, we froze positions. There were comments made by the citizens that we didn't cut anything, that we just took the easy route, raised tax. This was five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, and was not hired to see if that could work for this county. And if we can make it a year with these, I'd like them cutting. So if we have to add back, this is how we find out. The sheriff, the department came to us and said, "I can't train." And I have my two positions. So now, we know, okay, we couldn't cut them. But this was five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars that came to this county. It's not been spent, because we're trying to see. So just to clarify for the...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Lord.
Good clarification.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to clarify that this is not the actual salary. It includes fringes and benefits. That's the figure.
That's correct.
That is put in this eighty-seven thousand. And we did, we're reviewing this, because when health, safety, and welfare comes into play, we have to make some changes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Norton. All right, the auctioneer contract.
Mr. Chairman, when we started doing committees together, Mr. Bo Toth, he said, you know, "I'll earn my keep as the year goes on. I might be on certain committees," but he's earning his keep, so...
Thus far.
Thus far. So anyway, I'm just giving it a hard time, but we did take it very seriously. Mr. Toth and I had multiple meetings, and also had input from the LRA director, Mr. Shane. We have Andy here tonight for AA, if you've got any questions. But I'm asking, and he can, and maybe it might help, Andy, if you just come tell him the process before, I'm asking for you to give me the authority to sign the contract with him, anyway.
Board members...
This is recommendation of Mr. Toth and myself, and...
All right. Board members, y'all have had a chance to read over that contract, anyway, correct?
Right.
All right. All right, so do we, and I'm not trying to cut you off, but anyway, do we need to go over anything if everybody's in agreement with this?
Is everybody in agreeance with it?
I am.
I am.
Y'all are?
I am, but I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Of him.
I think we all for the deal.
I'm in agreeance with AA. I just have some contract language.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think that's what Mr. Norton is going to refer to, too.
Right.
Because we've talked about it.
Go ahead.
In the contract, it says the auction will be conducted online only, but then over on page four, it says the seller will consider pre-auction offers. So if it's pre-auction, that's not online only.
Actually, that should probably be checked, will not consider pre-auction offers. That is a, the MLS is mandate. So I'm a broker and an auctioneer. I'm a member of multiple MLS systems, and they mandate three things. They mandate the derivation of your listing price, if you will, whether it's the assessment, the reserve, or the opening bid. They, and one of the things that we have to say is seller will or will not consider pre-auction offers.
So thirteen is just the wrong boxes checked?
Thirteen should be seller will not consider pre-auction offers.
Right, I got you.
And what that does is just encourages everybody to participate in the auction.
Okay. What did you have next, Mr. Norton? Was there something else?
Yeah, she had, her and I had talked about the hundred-and-eighty days, and we all have had a little discussion about that. And I explained it to them to the best of my knowledge and reading the contract and knowing about the auction business. But would AA consider doing a ninety day rather than a hundred-and-eighty? We're looking to sell the property, but...
Right.
Hopefully, we sell it at the sale, but that's been two questions of two different other board members.
I got you. What would the change do?
Just reduce it from a hundred-and-eighty days, that if we sold it and it didn't go to sale, inside of the ninety days, you would still get the commission. Over the ninety days, you wouldn't.
Okay.
We're not listening with the realtor.
Yeah, yeah.
But it was just asked. If you don't want to do that, leave it in there.
We could do that. I'm a little reluctant to do that, just because, what that does is it protects me.
Right, it does. And I explained that in case it was sold.
Because...
There's one thing that we see in a real estate contract that I didn't see in this paragraph, and if you provide a list of contacts that you felt like you had earned a commission with, so that if we then sold it to that person later, then you'd have some protection.
We don't exclude, so we like to get that six months, hundred-and-eighty days, because we pay all the expenses, we make it no cost, no obligation, no risk for you, the county, as the seller. And that's just what we do for whether it's an institutional seller or an individual or whatever. So we like to do that for that much time. And the reason for that is somebody could say, "Well, you know, I've got a buddy on the board, and he said if it doesn't sell, then, you know, we'd sell it to him afterwards." But he knew about that sale because of my advertising. I mean, I put out...
Saying there's cricket politicians out there?
Not in this county.
Not in this county.
Some of the other places I've dealt with.
Right, not in this county.
You know, there may be that way. And it's not even a malicious thing or a cricket thing. It's everybody's trying to get a better deal, and they see that ten percent buyer premium.
They would save ten percent if they wait and bought it outside of the sale.
And they say, "Well, let's just, that's ten percent right there that we don't have to pay." Well, that's how I pay my bills.
Right.
That's how I pay my taxes.
How about we go one-twenty?
I can do one-twenty.
One-twenty?
Do it a hundred-and-twenty days? Okay.
That's fine. And I hope to, we have it in here to sell this on the day of the November board meeting. And I hope to give you really good news that night, and I hope to have a signed contract that night, so it won't be a moot issue. So I'm fine with that.
I think the citizens would love it, too.
Yeah, what...
I have page three.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, why are we doing that?
Item seven.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, I just want to clarify. After the work session, I don't know if y'all remember that, but Ms. Douglas recommended to me, even when we make these changes, and I'm, and sorry, Mr. Austin, I didn't tell you this, that we give this to, if you would go with this company, give them to review this contract.
Absolutely.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Another thing we might add, and I'll do that after Mr. Collins finishes his statement of question.
All right. Item seven, and this just, really one word, auctioneer will expose the property for sale at auction on November twenty-first. That's the day of our meeting. Isn't it going online before that?
Yeah, it will. So this contract is probably written when, before, that paragraph is probably written before online. So actually, if you visit bowlingalleyauction.com right now, you'll see this auction. It's private. It's on my website. It's already built. All I have to do is hit a button. So as soon as I get the signed contract and everybody's happy with that, I'll...
So exposing the property for sale at auction on November twenty-first?
That would be the conclusion of the bidding. So we end our auctions on Thursday morning.
We'll conclude the property.
Exposing, I think in that context, the language is meaning, "We'll expose the high bidding price." No, no, finish.
Yeah, it'll end.
Be finished on November twenty-first.
Yeah, that's correct.
You'll expose the bid.
Yeah, the high bid.
So the bidding, as soon as I hit the button and it's open, people can bid. Online's changed things a little bit from the live auction format, but as soon as I hit the button, it's a timer. It counts down to eleven AM on the twenty-first. So that's when all the action happens. So people will sandbag until the day of the auction.
All right, of course.
I mean, there's some auctioneers that keep things open for two days.
So we'll have two months.
It'll be, it'll be exposed for two months.
So we talked about, Mr. Collins, and you helped me out, and Mr. El, I haven't talked to Gary about this at all, but the idea is to, when we know how much somebody has offered, we don't, we want to go in closed session to have a discussion, are we going to accept that? Because that number should not be out there, okay? That, okay. Then, once we decide, if we come back and open a session, and then we'll make a motion to do a...
We've agreed.
I've agreed, to do a public hearing the next month to sell the property.
Yeah.
We're going to have to, because we...
Can't we do it same night?
You're going, wait a minute.
If we do it same night, you're out.
If his contract...
No, you got to advertise that.
We may have to, but that's going to have to change his forty-five-day closing period, because in this contract I read, he's got forty-five days to close it. And if you move it to the next month, that's not going to give enough time.
Well, that forty-five days would start when the contract is ratified, and if it's going to be a public hearing in December...
Before it's ratified.
Then the forty-five days...
So before it's ratified, that time don't count.
That's right.
Okay.
It's just going to be a...
That's that slow government stuff again.
You're going to tell me?
And you know, it's...
Can we advertise that we're going to possibly have a public, I mean, we're going to have a public hearing?
You're trying to do a same night.
If he's already, if he's already...
It's a wonderful Christmas gift.
If he's already setting the date up that we're going to close the sale and go into closed session, how come we can't advertise saying, "Property being owned by Notaway County LRA"? We're getting ready to get into that in a second anyway.
Considered for sale.
On November the twenty-first, we will consider the highest bid taken. Why come you come, we know this is going to happen. We know the auction's going to happen. We know we're going to discuss it.
And we'll come out and we'll say we didn't consider it, or we did, and this is the problem.
That's exactly right. I'd like to see us do...
Just to throw it out there, it will be, if you look at that website now, that you won't see a bids tab, because no bids have been placed, but once somebody bids, it's out there. So it...
Yeah, they'll know the number.
Eleven oh-two, people are going to know.
The person they asked that question to is standing right beside, behind you. Can we do that, Gary?
Yeah, I need to look into that.
Okay.
I don't know. I have it in my head that for a public hearing, I think we might have to list the price. I need to check.
Well, that would be the difference.
Yep.
That would be the difference.
I can honestly, while y'all are sitting here talking, I can probably check the Virginia Code and give you the answer.
Okay.
But I don't know that all the time in my head.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And to be honest with you, Mr. Bowen can communicate with me, and we can, you know, I can change the contract to...
The next question is, it's on the next item here, and I'm not trying to jump ahead, but I do tend to think ahead a little bit. If we dissolve the LRA, which we can do, does the administrator need to sign this contract after the LRA has been dissolved, and then it's Notaway County property that we're selling versus LRA property? Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think, and help me, I know, Mr. El, you're trying to look at the G state code. My conversation with Ms. Douglas is, we'll probably have to, we could do this resolution, but we're going to have to get deed every, we got to do an official deed to deed everything from LRA to Notaway County.
And I think you could do it in a deed that you don't have to, Turner can answer this, but specifically go and list everything. It's like an LLC that you're selling, conveying over the whole LRA to Notaway County. Is that right?
Yes, I've looked at this. The deed that conveyed that property into the Felton Authority is a deed, I believe, from the federal government, and it's a fifty-some-page deed. And I think it conveyed all of those properties in one fell swoop. So what we need to look at is, have there ever been any conveyances out of that?
There have.
Okay. And if there have, then what we could do is, if we can deed it all back to the county in one fell swoop, it's just going to require that we do the title work to be able to find what those off conveyances were.
Yeah.
Right.
So we find out what we actually own, too.
Correct. I'm not going to tell you that that's going to be as easy, as fast as, we can do it. But it might take a little while, just because we're going to have to pour through the circuit of court records and actually figure out what's still out there and what's coming back in.
So really, at this point, for swiftness, we need to sign this as LRA, this contract, after you look at it?
Well, no, I don't think we can sign it as the LRA.
Because the LRA can't sell it, correct?
Well, what we're doing is, the county is going to sell it, but we're passing a resolution to basically discontinue the LRA.
That's tonight.
And then everything that the LRA has, yeah. So y'all are going to pass that resolution, then everything the LRA has, we're going to need deeded back into the county, which is where we come in.
Right.
So the things we know that are going on, like this is going on the auction block, we can go ahead and do that deed.
Well, let me put it to you this way. For something like this, the way I see it, is we can identify this particular tract, and we can get this done quickly.
Yes.
We can do it back into the county.
We have this one, and then the two little houses we're...
Correct. I mean, we can get those knocked out like that, and we can deal with the others. The whole might be a little bit longer process, but if you just point to a piece and say, "I need this back into the county," we can do that.
Okay.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Good.
All right. So was there any other questions on the AA?
Did we have somebody mark down the changes?
Yes. I marked them on here.
Yeah, one-twenty.
Hundred-and-twenty days, the check mark in the box.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking for the authority to sign the contract after...
With the approved changes.
With approved changes and the review of the alloyee.
Okay. All right. So board members, what Mr. Bowen's looking for is the authority to sign this with the expectations that he will sign this only after the attorney has reviewed the changes that was presented tonight. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So now, the LRA, LRA resolution. So we have discussed this at our work session. So board members, I need the motion to give Mr. Bowen and myself the authority to sign this resolution to dissolve the LRA?
I'd like to read one paragraph just for the citizens.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah.
Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Notaway, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors hereby directs the county administrator to take any and all legal measures necessary to have the real property currently titled under the Fort Pickett Local Redevelopment Authority, an agency of the Board of Supervisors of Notaway County, Virginia, re-titled to the County of Notaway, Virginia. In explanation, this takes away a layer of bureaucracy. The LRA becomes employees of county administration and the Board of Supervisor. Takes away the cumbersome process as we go through and sell properties, try to turn this into an economic development for the county as opposed to a current loss. That's why this is happening.
All right. So y'all heard what the gentleman read there. We, I believe, do we get a motion?
We didn't get one yet.
I'll move that we sign this agreement.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Oh, just adopt this resolution.
I'll second that. All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the CRC AFID grant.
Okay, the CRC AFID grant.
That's the one I took out, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, you did, that's the reason why I had that.
We did, and let's let me explain that, y'all had already voted for that, and we couldn't find it, and we found we did, already voted on it. I, I didn't want to give money to that until the board gave me the approval.
Okay, right now, I need a motion to, uh, uh, accept the recommendations or amend the consent agenda for this, oh, nevermind. I need a motion to, um, accept the items of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and of course, you gotta have correspondence and information or items there in your package, and we are going to go to Mr. Bowen's, uh, administrative report.
Mr. Chairman and board members, worked on, um, a lot on employee development. Um, Ms. Presley and I, myself, on August 28th, we went to a strategic planning for local government with the public schools. The VACO, uh, Mr., I'm looking over here at Ms. Norton, because VACO have a, uh, lunch and learn, and, uh, we, I took her up to Richmond, and, and by the way, that was a, a free. I, I figured you wouldn't let me, well, it was free, y'all would let me go.
Yeah, if it's free.
So I didn't ask for approval. Um, but anyway, anyway, but it was very educational, both myself and Logan Presley. Uh, I went, also participated in a, on August 27th, a regional county adminis- administrator's meeting. It was hosted at Hampton Sydney. It's, it is interesting getting all the county administrators together, and some of the things they're dealing with is different with Notaway County. They're looking at possibly, and, and these are state rules too, laws, they're looking at, uh, they're having a lot of trouble with the Amish getting in, in, in collisions and, and young, young people driving, and that's, that's just something that we've really been fortunate to have, haven't had problems with. The, got, Mr. Zodi, I have, uh, he's on the project management for the new regional broadband affordability and adoption plan, so he's got a new job, he don't know it yet, but he'll find it when he gets back from vacation. But if he's watching, he'll find out. The biggest thing that I want to talk to you about tonight, um, so, and I want the public to know, um, the chairman and vice chairman has asked me, and of course, all board members doing discussions, they say, Steve, you gotta be proactive, you know? So we, we have a problem with the treasurer's office is in a, uh, it's in the basement of a building, and we have spent over four, right at forty-eight thousand dollars to dry that out. Of course, the drain's coming, it, it comes again, I mean, it just keeps, you, you get it better, and then it comes back. I have got to get the treasurer out of the building. Also, it was brought to my attention that, um, a lawyer for the 11th Judicial Circuit was assessing the courthouse yesterday, and he was walking with Judge Teefy. So that's not going away. So I looked at different options of moving the treasurer's office and knowing that's coming down the pike. And, um, one, I think Mr. Collins had called me, he said, was, Steve, call Philip and, and Van Norbeck in Blackstone, and there's, uh, there's a guy named Mr. Rapp who has a building at BB and T Bank.
Well, this was Plan A and Plan B.
Plan B, and actually, that was Plan C, I, I was looking.
That's right, that's right.
And it was Plan C. And I, and I'll be honest with the public and the board, um, I had thought, well, I'm just gonna go down there and look at it so I can say I looked at it? Because y'all, because they gave me directions, had no idea what I was gonna come across. And, um, so when I went down and looked at it, I realized, I said, you know, um, there's a possibility that the treasurer's office can come in here, the commissioner revenue office can come in here, and so could the voter registration come in here. And so I went to those, uh, department heads and constitutional officers, and I asked, hey, come on here, I want, I want to show you what's, what the possibility is. And surprisingly, they were on board. They, you know, and I know, I'm not saying right now nobody's moving, but I just want to tell you some of the things I did write down this morning, some of the assets that does happen there. The, um, the, it's got a drive-through where somebody could drop off their tax money, and it's in a safe. Once it goes to the, the safe deposit, I mean, it just goes through the direct deposit box. It's got, uh, they're working on it, it's got a handicapped public bathroom. It has a, of course, a drive-through where you could pay your taxes and never get out of the vehicle. It has a, uh, a walk-in vault, vault that you could actually store, and I went and measured the voting machines. We have about twelve, and if they moved the safety deposit boxes out of there, you can actually lock up in a vault our voting machines, if, that way, nobody can say, hey, we have voting fraud, and somebody's been messed with. It's, um, Christie Hudson would have a place as a commissioner, will have a place to have a private meeting with people and not, and not hear their business when they walk in. It's a place to sit down for public to wait for them, and, and the biggest thing is, the commissioner's office will be looking straight at the, um, uh, at the treasurer's office. And if somebody needs to go to both places, they'll be in the same building. It has a door set up that, if the, if the voter registration is open on Saturdays. The, the other part of the, 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 the building will be locked up, and so people can have a, come into a different entrance for voting registration, and you can throw a rock and hit the police station. So it's a very safe location. So I just want to tell you some of the, I, I, nobody's made any decisions, but you asked me to be proactive. I, I know I gotta move the treasurer's office one day now, soon. I'm, I'm not sure how long we can, we can still use, if they gonna open up the Burkeville School.
We don't want to waste money on mold remediation if we've got options.
Right.
The school was option A, or, I guess, the extension office was option A, and then we looked at the school. The school board has got some other ideas that they want to look at, so now we're, we're here. And this, as far as the funding goes, it's, uh, not set yet, still negotiating.
And it's, and it's not Notaway County purchasing the property more so perhaps at leasing the property.
We could, you could also mention with an option to buy later.
With an option to buy later, right.
But, but I, I think what I'm looking, what we think we all agree on, it's a temporary location, it's a temporary location, whether it's for five years or whatever.
Ten years or whatever.
We get into, we get into construction out here.
I, I won't have.
They need to go somewhere.
The citizens will, will have a place to conduct their business without being involved in construction.
So I, I recommend that, I know, Mr., I think Bo Toth has probably seen it, and I'm pretty sure Bill was with me the first time we walked in there. Mr. Ingram had, I've not, I probably has not seen it, and I know the chairman has not seen it.
I've been in there before when it was a bank, so I know pretty much the layout.
If you kind of get the layout, if you get in there, you kind of understand. I, I kind of briefly talked about it at work session, I know Ms. Norton had been, had probably, maybe has been in as the bank, but, um, uh, it is something that, so here's my, here's the sticky wiki, I'm just gonna say it. Here's what, what could be a deal breaker. I have got to know, I have got to know that the bright system, our financial system, can communicate from that building to the county administration office. And in that same process, I would take the, the hub of the bright system, which is in, it's in the treasurer's office now, relocate that to, uh, the building I am, that I'm in now, and, because that building's on generator. And, 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 and finance doesn't shut down when electricity shuts down. And, um, so, but I think that that's gonna be a deal breaker, and it's gonna also could be, you know, what's the negotiation of the price?
Well, you, and you also, you got two, you got two other items there, one's political, of course.
Yes, that's right.
We know that there's people gonna be saying, well, you know, of course, everybody's gotta go down there for this. Well, we're not saying, number one, that we're going there, what we're saying is, all options on the table. We have not seen anything in the center of the county or in the Burkeville area that, that may, could suffice it yet.
Phil Miskin has sent me an email, and, and he said, would you take consideration of the bills? I said, most definitely, but, but, but also, I want you to see what you might be competing against.
Right.
Because it.
The vendors here, the owners take care of the renovations.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
For, and it could potentially be a really, really good deal for the taxpayers of Notaway.
Well, right, the other thing.
As far as I'm traveling, you know, that's a long ways from Burkeville to Blackstone, but it's a long ways from Blackstone to the animal shelter, too. And that's on that end of the county.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, Mr. Chairman, we have to provide our employees with a safe environment. That's healthy, and two, Mr. Bowen, your forethought, I mean, it just makes sense. And with the timing, with the schools thinking about reopening Burkeville and the shape that was in, um.
We've got a, we've got a very important election coming up, so.
Then we move the registrar as well.
And if you look at other things, I'm just, Chairman, it, it, who's something, I don't know, one of y'all said, the sheriff's, the where he's located is like being in a submarine, I don't know who said that.
No, dog.
That's true.
Dog, right, dog. Being in a submarine, but anyway, which, but, you know, um, I mean, I, I went over to his office the other day, and he was busy, and I said, you know, and he showed me where they're trying to relocate stored stuff so they can even fit in spaces. And so, um, you know, sooner or later, I'm gonna have to, we're gonna have to do something, and, and it's tell, what's telling me is, if the judge is walking around with their lawyer now, it's not gonna be much longer.
Well, remember this too, now, we're, just because we're moving them, we're not gonna ignore the mold problem down there, because.
Still gotta address the issue.
You still gotta address that.
Right, so I talked to Nick Bowles, uh, 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 County, um, the inspector, and I said, Nick, you got any ideas? And so he contacted a, a company, and I supposed to meet with them, environmental, I can't think the name of them. They feel like I need a better, I need more air exchange down there. But they don't know that.
Right, right.
It's, it's another thing I'm gonna try, you know? And, and I can't, and how much do I keep sinking into something in money, and that's the thing I gotta.
Yeah, because if it, if you let it stay the way it is, I mean, just continue to do that, it's gonna infiltrate into the other building, that's right.
The only negative thing I'll say that I know I'm gonna hear is people always appreciate it doing business like they always have. And that's coming to the Notaway courthouse complex and being able to do, uh, take care of that thing. Be able to do, um, all the business in one place.
Right.
But they're already not being able to do that because they got the voter registrar's office up in Burkeville. And, and, uh, it, it's just more convenient to be able to do it one, but it's not practical right this moment.
Right.
It's just not. With the mold issue and people having to work down there, and I like old and I like history, but, uh, it, it's time that we accommodate them. Make it a little better. Um, when we went, Ms. Hudson and I went to the, uh, met with the, about the boundary, the Prince Edward boundary situation, we had to go to Prince Edward courthouse, and I, and I, and I, and I give kudos to Ms. Hudson, she made, she made a point. You know, we had to go through security and then to get to the county administrator. She goes, I don't think we really need that in Notaway, I mean, we need security, we, we, but she, she does like the, the openness of our courthouse where you can come and say, come on here, you know? But, but it is a point, if I go in, I want to see Ms. Hudson, I want to talk, most people, they don't, they don't want to go and see the people who work for Ms. Hudson, they want to go see Ms. Hudson, right? And, and it's places there where she can have a private conversation with people, you know, not everybody knows that's none of their business, and it's just, it, but I do recommend for anybody that makes any kind of decision, is, is, y'all, we go down there and, and just have a discussion up.
Right.
I can take John up there on Tuesday, and Ms. Norton, when she gets time.
And I'll get with you, too.
Yeah, we go all separate, not a meeting.
Right.
That I can just show you some of the ideas.
Right.
Well, Ms. Norton, what we do, if we can get up on Tuesday, we'll make him buy lunch.
And y'all mentioned, um, you mentioned security. I have had a couple of people mention that here. I am just amazed that we don't have any cameras around this courthouse complex. And I think that's something, even it's a matter that we need.
We got a couple, we got a couple, but not, not enough.
Not to the extent that we need them.
Sheriff, yeah.
This Blackstone location is, the back of the building is the eBay Exchange location. So that's a safe place, it's monitorable cameras where citizens can go and meet somebody, that they've sold something. So that's on the back of the building, and then the bank is on the corner, gets out. So this already has cameras that are in place.
I just think we owe our staff, when they're dealing with money and they have that much traffic flow, that we need something.
And I'll give kudos to this, uh.
I don't know.
Mr. Van Urbeck, um, offered some things. Every morning, the treasurer's gonna have a police escort to deposit funds across the street. That's what they do for the town now, and they would do that for the county. He offered to, his town staff with trucks and trailers, come up here and get everybody, take them back to, take them to Blackstone.
With the stuff, ain't that mighty nice, huh?
He investigate, he's going to investigate.
What's he getting out of that?
That's what I like.
He's gonna investigate whether or not that big generator that's on the police station has enough KWs.
To run both.
To run that.
So this was somebody that seems to be very grateful if there're gonna be some more folks coming through town, so.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll get it figured out, we'll get it figured out, and we'll, we'll get everything corrected, we'll make sure everybody's safe, and we'll do what the judge tells us to do, even if we have to make a tax after.
I think we gotta look at it from an economic standpoint of, do you want to build a building that big here now, right now? We can't, but here's an option here that we can use that will help and, and keep our costs down. And I, you know, I'm, I know what it's gonna be like.
Yeah.
Gotta go to Blackstone, gotta go there and find a place to park, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
There's quite a bit of parking.
Yeah, and I just, I just think the citizens have to realize, we're trying to do what's best, so we get everything in one place. They can go do everything they need to do in that one place, and it's, you know, I'm gonna have to drive from home to Blackstone to do whatever I have to do.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's just, that's just part of, of, of living in a rural county.
Yeah, it's a growing pain, is all it is.
That's what it is.
We're, we're getting there, we just, we, we gotta get there.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have a goal of, we, we, we gotta make a decision very soon for starting, I, I gotta start, I gotta get her, I, I need to get that treasure out of that basement, and I would like to have a goal of January 1st, 2025, to start moving on something.
Well, if we can get it before then, Mr. Bowen, that, I, I think this board is, is clearly in agreement to get that done, so as quick as we can move.
Providing we get a, a good figure on.
Yes.
Right.
National tax.
That's gonna be right.
That's soon.
So as quick as we can move, as safely and as responsibly, let's, let's, let's rock with that. What else that you have in your report?
That was all my report, sir, thank you for taking the time, that was the biggie.
Yeah, okay, well, Mr. Collins, what you have, my man?
I'm, I'm very pleased.
Is this closed camera?
Yes.
Well, that's good, made it. That was sad.
We, um, we talk, we laugh and we joke and say nothing happened. We've got some, some solutions for the landfill, some ideas that are being passed around. We now own an animal shelter that is probably gonna cost less than a million dollars, is that a fair?
I'm, I'm, we're shooting for it anyway.
That went from four point eight million dollars to one million dollars. I was buying it, getting cleaned up, get people, get the dogs in there, and then cares is gonna be able to use their money to make it a place for adoptions, so we've accomplished that. Emergency services, they're gonna have a new radio system, they're gonna be safe when they go out on calls, they'll be able to hear each other. I thank you, board. Appreciate it.
Mr. Engel?
I forgot to do one thing when we were talking about the animal shelter, I don't know if y'all have seen the, uh, I don't think they've got any ad in the paper yet. Of course, it's all over Facebook, but there is a, an anonymous gift of fifty thousand dollars. If they can raise fifty thousand dollars, they're gonna get fifty thousand dollars or more, so it'd be a one hundred thousand dollars going into the cares fund. And so, gentlemen, a family acts, a family has pledged to match up to fifty thousand dollars. So that's something great, if anybody feels like donating, the donations will count from September 1st, 2024 to January 15th, 2025. And cares is a nonprofit, and you can take your donations off your taxes. So that's, that's one thing that I forgot to do when we were doing that. The other thing is, I want to make a statement for the Ingram family. I won't get emotional, so y'all just hang on. When this event took place, I got over to the house. I live next door, but I couldn't see the fire through the trees and so forth and so on, but when I got over there, eventually, it was the crew fire department, the Blackstone Fire Department, the Burkeville Fire Department, Cambridge Fire Department, and the Victoria Fire Department, and two squad units there. This was, this event started about 12:30 in the morning. Those people stayed there till 4:30 that morning. We do not know how lucky we are in this county to have people who will get up out of their beds and get in a fire truck or an emergency squad vehicle and go to an event like that.
Amen.
We do not know how lucky we are, and I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart, my family does. I was able to bring my brother out of the hospital today, thank goodness. He's very fortunate that he was able to wake up and hear the fire and get out of the house when he did. And, uh, I just want to thank the citizens, I've had so many contacts with people and people that didn't know about it, and they called me, and, and it's just been an overwhelming amount of people getting in touch and, and giving their condolences, and, and I've got, I made a mistake, I told my wife, I said, I made a mistake, and she said, what's that? I said, I put that before picture of the house on Facebook. And that's the first time I teared up when I put it on there. And, because, you know, you're, you're doing, going through so many things, and when I put that on there, and people started responding to that picture and talking about the fun times they'd had there, spending time with my family, and, and that just, that did it for me, but I want to thank everybody from the bottom of my heart, my family really appreciates everything. Thank y'all.
All right, Ms. Norton?
Make me cry.
Me and you both.
That's what community is all about, and that's why we're here, to try to do the best we can to provide for our citizens. And on that light, I, I will tell you, I went to a PSR, a Piedmont Senior Resource Meeting the other night, and Notaway County is now second largest user of all their services. But this group is phenomenal, they've won national awards, but they, all of their programs, I'm in the chair of their programs, there are thirteen programs that people are becoming aware of their services here. Legal aid, um, farmers market, Cool Care, they give them air conditioners, coming to the home, taking them to the doctor. This, this program is really going, they have a three million dollar budget, and they wanted to extend their thanks to Notaway County for your support, so that they can provide their hours. It, it's just phenomenal, the number of people that they serve. They serve just in Notaway alone, three thousand nine hundred and twenty, there's three thousand nine hundred and twenty elderly people that they are able to serve in this community, so thank you for that. And I did host a town hall, I thanked Mr. Bowen for coming to that, I promised the people when I ran that I would be transparent and open, and we'd have discussions, and I'd try to get different leaders. And, uh, Mr. Bowen was very beneficial there, talking about projects, it was a good, good meeting. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you, Ms. Norton, Mr. Toth?
Bill Collins stole everything I was gonna say.
I'm gonna call you first next time.
No, I, I think the board has certainly moved forward in a lot of different ways in helping the citizens of Notaway County. Boardways, a lot of behind-the-scenes work is done, uh, amongst us individually in our work sessions, and, um, you know, Dicky, you, you, you losing your, your family home like that, somebody can't say they, they understand, unless that's happened to them, they don't. You know, when I seen that house, it looked very similar to my mom and daddy's house looks today, and it was a lot of, and you didn't live there, but it was still your family home, your brother lived there.
Yeah.
And I mean, you was blessed to have your brother not, you know, get injured more than he did in there, but you lost a structure that can't be rebuilt.
A lot of things went there that, they're gone forever.
They will, that's exactly right. And unless a person, and I've not been through a, a devastation like that in a, in a fire, unless a person goes through it, they, they can't fathom the, the anguish that, mental anguish that it could cause. Notaway's doing, doing a whole lot better than I thought, you know, I was glad that Bill pointed out the point that the, uh, animal shelter is gonna cost about a fourth of the original anticipated amount. That's gonna go a whole lot toward the radio system as far as finances and getting that done, and, um, and dissolving the LRA to where we can actually start making some economic development like that, at, uh, next to Fort Barfoot is a, certainly a plus, and, uh, the biggest plus, I think, is us board members working together individually. You know, we, 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 we're not supposed to meet together, and we don't, but we all know where we go at when we need certain things, we go at when we need certain things, and, you know, where we can get it from. Each one of us is used a little bit differently, I ain't found out what my purpose is yet, but, like I said, everybody's good for something. But I enjoy each and every one of y'all, and I look forward to continue working with y'all, thank you.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you, brother, appreciate it.
And of course, Dicky, there's no more touching sentiment you could have given to people, and you know your love, brother.
Well, I love this county, I mean, I've been here all my life, that's.
Yeah, well, and I'm gonna keep this short and sweet, and for those who don't know what this may mean, I'll explain it real quick. I've always said, the government moves at the speed of molasses, and that molasses is cold as hell, but I said.
Hell ain't cold, who lied to you?